Stand for the pledge of allegiance and back here below the clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so first off, we have mission statement and strategic direction. We are on. Like priority three, I will read those tonight. So. Uh, one of the second community school district mission is we will empower a community of lifelong learners who strive for personal excellence through meaningful relationships in real. Real world authentic learning experiences. And our strategic priority number three, expand opportunities for students to develop self-worth and connections to others. Um, next up, we have now the time to declare conflict of interest if any board members have that. Do I hear any declarations? All right, we'll move on to approval of agenda. Any changes or additions, Cam or Justin?
Uh, which there's no change in the agenda. One of the company attachments changed. We got the handbooks. There was a last minute change. Uh, regarding transportation. So that's been added to the list of changes and we'll talk about when we get there, but that was. It was on the agenda.
And that's under the new business C approval of handbooks twenty four twenty five.
Handbooks already there is just new attachments. So we'll talk about when we get there though.
If nothing, I would approve, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Gina is our second. Second by Malcolm. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is visitors or communication from the public. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on behalf of the public tonight? Perfect. We'll move on to informational, they building level reports.
Uh, so we'll go ahead and start. Uh, I linked a few of them in there. I mean Doug left his at your table there as well. So let's just go in order tonight. Doug, we'll start with you.
All right. Get the sheet at your table, kind of front and back then here. Um, the first part, we've got a ton of stuff going on, but the field first grade took a trip out to the airport. I got talked in like individuals about careers and they're at the airport um, and flying and things like that. Fun. Um, we went over our fast data today with the reading fast data today with the teachers. We'll talk about that a little bit more and then we'll do it right now, I guess. Eight percent of our students are proficient across the building uh, compared to the average of Heartland, which is sixty six and the state average is sixty eight. Um, and if you look at the back sheet. Uh, that's the goes that data over the last six years. Um, and the numbers at the top and the the green, white and silverish columns. Um, are the percent proficiencies in those grade levels for the fall, winter and spring. Um, across the grade across the years. Uh, some things that's kind of cool for me. Um, if you look down at the talk, the charts, I tried to squeeze them all in there. They're a little small. Um, but if you look at the top left chart, that's kindergarten. Um, and on the left hand side, it's there's a column for high risk kids, summer risk kids, and then low risk kids. And then they don't give college career pathways by any kind of earnings, but you'll notice ninety nine percent of our kindergartners right now are in the low risk. And then if you go to the little chart right next to it, um, that's the amount of growth kids made. Two percent of our kindergartners had two percent, two percent of flat or no growth, eleven percent had modest growth. Forty percent with typical growth and then thirty eight percent with aggressive growth. So really excited with those uh. Typical growth and aggressive growth categories. And then you can kind of look at the other grade levels and you go by. Once he hits second grade, they can decide if they're going to college or not. I'm just kidding. But it puts college and career pathway. And that's why you'll see, well, these, they're not quite as tall in second and third grade. Well, that's because they've now broken it out into two columns. Um, and you can just see where our, where our growth is there. You'll see a lot of stuff in those first columns of taking kids down. We were moving kids in the right direction. So. Any questions about that? That was a lot of stuff.
I do have one quick question on your graphs on the, or not the graphs, but the chart on the top.
Yes.
They should stair step to the next cycle, right? As the grade moves up, okay?
Yeah. So if you, yeah. Yep. So you go down like. Spring of two twenty two, twenty three kindergarten would was ninety two, then they moved down to first grades, right? When they started in the fall, they were eighty.
Okay.
Um, which is one thing we've looked at, because if you look at that, we have a lot of summer loss. So last year, beginning of this year, I think it was, we actually called the A A and said, get us the numbers across the A A of districts. And our summer loss is like the best in the A A too. As big as that looks.
Cause I was gonna bring my next question, our, our spring there fifty seven from kids leaving that, you know?
Yeah, we have a lot of summer loss, but it's actually better than anywhere else. Um, we've started looking at stuff, some incentives for kids for reading over the summer. Um, so we'll get that started this summer. The next year, the summer will have something in place. With an app that we can grow the point. So, yep. Good question. Any others?
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Oh, I guess I didn't read the bottom. That's right. Priority number three.
Kind of a big deal on three, dog. I got it all.
Well, we're gonna steal the thunder here. We, we can sing it together. Um. We, hey, we had a great week, high school mentors and stuff. Students enjoyed having me in the ice cream store for that one. And then. The middle school and the junior high are elementary. That's what I said. Middle school and elementary are.
You go and say it.
National Showcase School for C K H. Yeah, really bad news. We were both able to throw big celebrations on Friday and fetting candles and everything we'll find for the next six months. Um, but really proud of the teachers and the kids and everything they've done. Um, to follow that program. Even the teachers today, when we talk about what things make these scores possible that we're moving these kids. Uh, the teacher said a lot of behaviors are better. I had more time to make kids because we're teaching these social contracts and stuff like that. So that's, that's really kind of cool. Um. And then just keep going out in the community preschool, went to the library this last week. So got some summer reading programs started. Any other questions? All right. Any building questions? Julie.
Um, so strategic priority one, uh, my teacher teams have really started reflecting on. Um, all of the projects that we've been working on this year and going through conversations. Uh, we kind of set a criteria of what makes something authentic. So now we're going back and having those conversations and it's really. Um, rich and thoughtful of, oh yes, we're going to keep this one. And what's our next step to make? It is even more applicable for students. So those conversations are happening right now. Uh, my B L T discussions have started around the profile of a graduate work. And where we're going to start embedding those traits into the content, learning experiences. Again, that's kind of part of that first one where they're having reflective conversations and going. Asking themselves, did we really rely on innovative thinking to? Uh, in this project, did our students, were they required to communicate something out? Do we have an authentic audience, that type of thing? So. That work is still going. We're kind of um, pausing since we're taking such a large team to. Uh, Napa Valley in June. Of middle school teachers to learn more on project based learning, what the gold star standard is for the project. And then we're going to take that information and apply it to our within the strategic priorities. So. That is happening. Um, expanded opportunities. So in number three. When I met with teachers, every month at our monthly assemblies, we celebrate um. Students who are nominated by teachers who demonstrate like the character trait for that month. So we've had. Lots of students during our celebration, we had all those kids come down front and it was really. Incredible to see the amount that we get to celebrate and how many more. That we have sitting that didn't get the award, um, because we say, you know, nominate two. From your classroom. And so with that. We looked at what could we do to celebrate those kids who. Continue to make growth with our C K H. Should we set some criteria around? No missing work. So responsibility and being safe and being kind at the middle school is a big thing. So we said. No major office referrals and we'll let you have. That we can use as teaching tools. So fourth quarter, we are going to have a half day movie day. Where the kids are picking the movie and we've got the big screen. We'll set up the big screen, have special snacks and do that for those kids. And so we're kind of excited about that to see the number of kids that we're going to get to celebrate through that. Um, the last one on there is the press release for the national showcase. That said, getting to celebrate with teachers, the kids, um. That little secret surprise. They were all questioning my judgment on having an assembly at Friday in the afternoon. Just some things coming up in the building. Tomorrow, we have our run through wax museum. So this year we're doing it differently where the student body will get to go through and see the fifth graders projects and then. It opens to the public on Wednesday and parents will come through on Wednesday. So. You're welcome to come see the wax museum. Um, as well as the following eighth, fourth and sixth grade choir. Fourth grade, the grade level and sixth grade choir will both be gone out of the building next Monday. Fourth grade has their field trip to the Palms in Milwaukee. And sixth grade is performing in Adventureland.
Any questions?
What time is the wax museum on Wednesday for the public?
I'll show up an hour early.
I don't have a fifth grader anymore.
A couple of fifth graders, right? Yeah, yeah.
It's always a fun experience to go to the wax museum.
You're Larry Bird. Awesome. Any questions, Julie? All right, Josh, uh, these are linked in your agenda too. So you should have those.
Yep. I'll do a little recap on the month of April and then uh, my board report really touches on. Uh, some of the planning that my building leadership team and I have started in the twenty four, twenty five year. So. Uh, April was a busy month at the junior high. We had our AgriVision influencer visit where all our seventh graders uh, went over to AgriVision. And did five little mini tours, um, different career pathways available within um, that organization. So kids learned about marketing. My mechanic side of it. I'm really just got to dive into all different career opportunities there. And the kids really enjoyed it. And we did a reflection activity. When we got back. Um, the eighth readers went to Simpson and did a scavenger hunt, which was uh, kind of a dirt campus tour. And then they got to participate in three different like academic sessions that sort of mirrored what a college classroom would look like for them. And a lot of the skills they, they worked on in there were a profile of graduate skills. So that was cool. They get to work on uh, communication. Um, critical thinking, problem solving. So, so that was neat. Um, and then we had our Pamo Park uh, community service activity. Which I thought went really well. Um, kids were over there for a couple hours and cleaned up the trails and. Um, just got to get back to the community. So. And all those, three of those things really to kind of touch on our strategic priorities. Um, so for next year, um, just a little, some things we've been working on. Um, priority one, increase student opportunities that integrate real world focus and application based learning. Um, our goal is to level up our authentic learning uh, opportunities for kids. Um, we're sending a one staff member to California this summer for the P D L to learn more about the gold star. Um, and what that looks like. And so our goal is to encourage staff and to brand the tools and resources to. You know, take their authentic learning projects to that, to that next level and really have kids, you know, create a driving question. Uh, drive the research, bring in authentic audience, have it and have a robust product and performance. Uh, to show, demonstrate to, to that real audience. So that's, that's a goal for us next year. And then. Um, something we, I picked up on when we were in Kentucky last summer. Um, it's minutes, that was a school that has a real robust profile of a graduate was an authentic learning showcase. Um, so the uh, building leadership team and I started looking at how can we bring that to Lurssett Junior High and we're looking at possibly in March. Um, at twenty twenty five during parent teacher conferences to have the kids showcase some of those gold star uh, projects. And so. And that'd be a great way to increase attendance at conferences as well. Uh, strategic party two, integrating twenty first century skills. And really focused on how, how are we going to deploy our profile of a graduate? And explicitly teach and then assess and then report out on, on the twenty first century skills that we deem. Uh, uh, critical. And so that's, it's kind of a fun task as we're doing it at the district level and then down at the building level. Um, and the classroom level. So how do we do that all seamlessly and, and come stay unified? Um, teacher party three is expand opportunities for students to develop self-worth and connection to others. We are planning three community service projects for next year. We have one in the fall and the spring. We're going to add one in the winter um, for next year. And then we're thinking about how do we uh, bring in candy members for uh, family engagement. So we have. We'll have one in the, in August. That's the district wide one. And then we plan on having two others um, throughout the year. And then building strong relationships um, with student staff. And then that comes back to our C K H. And how do we, how do we take that to the next level as well? So we're looking at ways to um. Make sure that we're not just doing the skeleton of C K H, but really getting into that, to that next level. So that work classrooms are being. Uh, managed by the, by the students, reducing those behaviors and kind of touching what Doug said, um, giving teachers more time to. Uh, to teach and to, instead of doing the behavior. So. Just a little preview of what we're focusing on for next year.
Questions, Mr. Sussman? Cam?
Uh, it's linked in there. So you guys can see strategic uh, priority one, just continue to do our job shadow activities. Um, some more internship stuff, physics day planning, Tony's working still with. Guys from the state Iowa and various colleges to create that, hoping to have that down in the fall. Think uh, this week he's going with vector equipment to start doing uh, some of the speed analysis and some of that stuff to get the problems. Uh, as real world as he can. Um, kind of our Josh Henry group, they've been doing some really cool things, just like going to playing zoo, a pack of farms. Um, yeah, their food days. Um, so just get a lot of experience and. Meals on Wheels, that sort of thing. If you guys have seen them around, um, in a ton of, of real life experiences there. Yeah, college career visits, we continue to do those, just keep hammering those. Uh, kids are at Mercy, Mercy Medical last week. Uh, we're kind of, I think that was kind of our last one here with eight days left, but I just continue to bring kids on campus. Uh, our ISAF scores are based in on there, um, with ninth, tenth and eleventh, third. They're that good. They're choking. Uh, priority two, uh, twenty first century skills. Uh, we, we're just continuing to do the portfolios, sell the portfolios for profile graduates. So kids have something they can turn in and share. Um, staying with our guest speakers, Iowa State D M U. Uh, we had a lot of officers over in, log flaring people the other day with the C S I presentations, uh, which is good. Um, yeah, we brought kids to things like crucible show, uh, gone to Iowa State for the cultural awareness club. Um, spring play, we were finally able to hold after a couple of. Um, so unsuccessful attempts. So you have fifteen minutes in for like, and then uh, some storms come in. So. Kids been doing a lot of things. Uh, priority three, again, developing self-worth, connection to others. Best buddies have had two pretty cool events last couple of times. April, there was a crafting game day. Uh, they just did their walk at Adventurelands Saturday, if I'm not right. Uh, rat club, if you guys are leaving, you go kind of by Landon McDonald's room there. Paint a bunch of ceiling tiles, positive images, messages that are, that are there for kids. We kind of have it in one, one area. Uh, F F A banquet, um, they, what was I think that was? May three, may four? Uh, was fantastic. Kids did a great job leading it. Our F F A group had a fantastic year this year. Uh, Carly Christensen is going to represent our school at the national F F A competition and. Who is the inner job interview uh, category that she's leading. She'll be our president again next year. Um, we just, this is a really good banquet. They did a great job. Uh, we had a successful prom on April twentieth. Despite the scheduling, successful prom, um. Kids did a great job decorating the gym for grand march. We changed and went back to the Jackson building, which. I think was an original location instead of the gym. And now we went back. It was really good. Uh, we didn't have any discipline issues. We didn't have anything come up. Uh, kids did a wonderful job. It was a wonderful evening. Uh, currently voting on the musical in the fall. So again, having kids, kids get really excited for this. So we've got our. Our bracket up on one musicals coming out in the fall and they show up in the morning and we have a winner, a loser, kind of like an N C double A bracket type of thing. Uh, so I got posted today. It's really exciting for that. Uh, priority four, building strong authentic relationships with the community. Uh, I got a lot of positive comments about post-prom. Um, it's a huge undertaking and I know this is being close here, trying to work with that. But just the committee and the volunteers that come and help with that night. It's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of time. Um, but the kids have a lot of fun. Uh, and it was again, another successful event. Um, again, Chad and I, no discipline, no issues. So that was good. Um, wrapping up our mentoring program, also middle school, elementary, I think we've got ice cream, something on Wednesday, tomorrow, wait, two days, Wednesday. Uh, there'll be like a Sunday thing that we'll do. Some of our high schoolers will go to W M S field day. Can keep them with high five Fridays, trying to get our bigs in front of our littles. Um. Going back to the mentor mentee thing. It's been pretty positive um, for our kids. April seventeenth, we hosted the Y team, I don't know, Y team blood drive. I know that's the technical name. Y team doesn't do anything with the blood. They just line it up. Everybody else takes the blood. Put on by the students. They do a good job of communicating uh, for the blood bank and, and yeah, a good thing. So. Uh, building specific topics, uh, they want to make sure everybody's on the same page with. So we've looked, you guys know, we've been looking for an open spot in industrial tech for. Eight months.
Since November.
It feels like a long time. Yeah. Yeah. Since, yeah. Uh, long time. Um, we're pivoting to a one person shop. So we've met with Scott. He's in a cover of courses in the department. We're not, uh, there's a neighboring district that's in the same boat as us and they, they're pivoting also to a one person shop. So it's. Uh, we're not, we're not alone in that. Um, but. Uh, in dealing with Scott and having conversations with him, we're, we're going to be able to teach. It was fourteen different courses over the course of the year. Um, Scott volunteered to teach two courses in early bird fashion. So we could get another offering in. Uh, we still have a prep forum. We still have everything taking place. The only thing it might impact are just the number of sections. Um, so it might mean that some of our freshmen and sophomores may not be able to get in there right away. And, and, and looking at our courses right now, we have some sophomores that are, they've already run the gauntlet, like they've burned every class that they can possibly take. So. Um, I think we're in a good spot. Um, but it was, it was kudos to Scott that he was willing to do that. Um, and it also saves our kids from having to travel. Different places or doing some of the sharing green things. Um, second thing to make sure to share with you guys, cybersecurity classes, we're signing up. Right now we've got six students on. For cyber one, we've got three that have already said, yeah, I'm all in for cyber two without even taking cyber one. Um, we don't have any of the incoming ninth graders in, but Mr. Lipton is starting to do some recruiting. Um, I know, I think later on in the meeting, we're going to talk about a twenty eighty agreement for uh, neighboring schools for that. So I think. Between that and, and our kids, um, will be able to have some good, good numbers of cyber classes. The kids that are in are, are really excited for it already and looking forward to that. Uh. Iowa City is another neighboring district, I mean neighboring, I guess, the other district in Iowa that's, that's running this program. Um, so when we do professional development and they come onsite to the state, uh, we'll just have, we'll pair with Iowa City. Into our connections there. So last one, list of seniors to approve for graduation. I know I said, I think we sent to you guys earlier. Yeah, we've got a couple of, a couple of students that may not make the, the end goal, but they might make it out through summer school. Um, so we're excited about that. Hopefully we can get them all through, but. And then important dates are there, obviously. Uh, I want to welcome, uh, invite you guys on Wednesday. If you want to come to awards tonight, seven o'clock in the auditorium. I love our senior awards. Uh, we'll do our practice on Friday the seventeenth. We will walk through our buildings and the seniors last walk through. Uh, that morning and then they are done. Our graduation on Sunday at two thirty.
Any questions?
Yeah, Optimist Hot Dog Day made it on that list too.
I didn't make sure that they're other two. Any questions for Cam?
Alright, we're going. Um, our high school students ISAFs scores, how do those compare to? The state?
The state average?
Yeah, just curious.
That's a good question. I didn't do state average. I did it comparatively to other schools.
Okay.
In our district. So, or not in our district, sorry, in our.
Is that on here or did I miss that?
I didn't share that.
We'll get a lot of that data in the fall too, when they do the published reports. We'll actually get like Heartland published reports to the A A system too. Cause right now they're just preliminary reports that we get that the, that can be scored via machine.
Sadly, the officials that come out till the fall. So these are unofficial preliminary. Yeah. Good question. Uh, all right, we're going to pivot, go to Mrs. Kane's room and uh, for the next part and also for the A I team. So we'll get up and head that way.
I think Justin, we're still with you for seventh, eighth grade I J discussion?
Yep. So as you heard, uh, Mr. Smith explained, uh, with the one person industrial tech departments, um. He was teaching exploratory class, we're teaching exploratory industrial tech at the junior high. With him not being able to do that to cover high school classes, we're short there. So, uh, you've probably seen some of the stuff that London's I J class has been doing. Uh, they approached us about offering I J free to the district for two years at the seventh and eighth grade level. Um, the actual I J agreement is a little further down in the agenda for us to approve later. It would be the same in year three if we wanted to. We're not bound to, we're not obligated to. But a year or three, if we wanted to, we can make the decision then. It's about a twenty six thousand dollar investment on the district's part. We asked, uh, Josh, Kim and I met with, um, the representative from I J. And he walked through, they're doing this in other districts, this seventh, eighth, they're calling it I J light. Um, they kind of pared down the projects and like get every kid exposed to it. At the secondary level, not every kid takes I J. It's an elected about sixty kids a year is roughly what we're serving. Uh, at the secondary level. Um. They selected our district out of other districts in Iowa that they want to pursue and present this to. If the board has in, uh, interest in doing that, um, we would move forward with trying to hire a teacher, bring back the actual agreement in. June for you to approve. Does that make sense? And I linked in kind of the I J essential constructs, that document we got today, um, that aligns what those classes will be. It aligns to our strategic priorities of authentic learning, project based learning. Some of the other skills we're trying to teach. Uh, and it fills a gap for us currently. Uh, we do intend to continue to off, uh, advertise for. An industrial tech teacher. I mean, we, we see that as a need, um, based on our, our student interest. So we're going to continue to advertise. Uh, Cam laid out the reality for you that there are just not a lot out there. Um. I was at super to me with another, a super, they just lost theirs. Um, and they're not sure how they're going to fill either. So. Um, you'll approve the actual agenda. I'm just seeing if the board has interest in us pursuing this. Administratively, we see it as a filling a need and kind of laying to our strategic priorities. So if so, we'd give them the go ahead. We'd advertise for this position. We'd bring back the twenty eighty agreement in June. But this would allow us to start on the process of trying to find somebody to start in the fall. Does that make sense?
Somebody just at the junior high?
Yes, uh, they would see to the junior high. They would work with London to support him, but they would be primarily responsible for seventh, eighth grade. The six week exploratories that those kids get around I J. So it's a part time, sorry, can we interrupt Malcolm, but. They teach like a half a day and then the other half they're collecting data. They're supposed to be out in the, in the community finding connections. Uh, lineup, guest speakers, all of those things. Um, so that's kind of the other part of their day. We did talk about those two supporting each other. So if London's gone, so if us throwing a sub in there. This teacher could go actually teach the I J would know it and vice versa. So there would be some of that support. We did also talk about a year three because they've been looked, they've been asking us to offer a nine, ten version. Whether the eleven, twelve, I threw out, can we do a seven, eight, nine? And a ten, eleven, twelve. Um, and they said there are some districts that are looking at that configuration. So. We may have options to, in, in year three. I'm missing, I think Josh can from that conversation.
What's the job market look for that? Like, what's the outlook?
Great question.
Somebody would be liable for that.
We don't have to have a teaching license. Um, so I J's got it set up with the state that they don't have to have a teaching license. London doesn't. They look for the right fit, um, and then they send them through their own training to do it. Um, I think we may have some internal. Associate interest, but I'm just speculating. Does that make sense? Um, their I J's a. It's a pretty decent salary and pretty decent benefits to work with them. And it's a third district, a third. State and a third corporation that usually covers the cost. They've got a donor who is uh, willing to fund two years up. They've got a donor who is uh willing to fund two years up to try and grow I J across Iowa, which is why it's being offered for us two years free. That's the issue, can we find somebody, this just allows us to start. Like if you guys said, yeah, we're, we're giving you the verbal, we know we got an approved agenda, ju- uh an actual item in June. We would post it uh this week, get that process started. And then once um it's approved in June, they can, they can offer and and get going.
So what's the difference between this and that?
Industrial.
Sorry, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Uh yeah, they're gonna do a more career exploration, uh more uh resume building, those kind of things. Yeah, working with community members, the leadership stuff, like if you saw uh London's kids went and did um like a business plan proposal. Um all of those things, one thing they threw at us, which is a good point, is. A lot of those um activities of London does are year-specific. So they happen in like November, well, there'll be a section of kids that um may not have had it or will have had it earlier, and how does that work? Josh talked to him about, well, what if we pull some of those kids that are really good and they support some wind time, so those kids going can work on, so I'm not in I J now, I had it. In the, in the fall, the activities here in the spring. They could still pull that student in and work, whether they were a high flyer and wanted to go compete at these competitions. And support some wind, there are some limitations, they call it I J Light, but they're trying to get the exposure, career um. Exploration and some of that, it's just a scaled back version of it.
Is there any overlap between, is it Husky Ready, seventh, eighth grade with?
We did talk about that.
Cause some of that.
Yeah, we did.
Career builder, that stuff is kind of, I mean Sawyer just was in.
There'll be a little bit of it, but there'll be more of like the career exploration part in the I J part, they'll get deeper into the cur- the actual career.
I just wanna make sure, you know, we're not.
Where, where Husky Ready does more of like the employability, soft skill sets, this is more of like the career-based. Learning part and they'll dig deeper into something like that, some of the skills will overlap, which is actually not a bad thing. But, but there will be some completely different content as well.
And then is there enough difference between seven and eight? If I took it in seven, eight, does that mean I'm really not gonna get anything different in eleven-twelve or?
Just. Yeah, that you would.
Okay.
You're gonna get a lot, a lot of difference.
Okay.
So like in that eleven and twelve, you're gonna be more in like a job shadow, push out. Type of deal, whereas in that six-week exploratory, you're probably not going to maybe the.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they call them P B L, so like the units are different, and so they can create different units for seventh and eighth grade kids, so they're not doing the same, what they would, what they call their lessons are P B Ls.
Okay, and then, so it's part-time, so it'd be like halftime person we'd be hiring?
It's full-time, they're full-time in the district, but they keep their teaching, their teaching assignments on about half a day, so London and I have kids. Like half, there's a ton of um record-keeping.
Yeah.
That I J requires them to do, so there's that part, there's the career builder, and they can also fill in, like they could. Not a long-term sub, but they said, you, you know, we know subs are tough, they can pull in and step in this class a bit too, so there's some of that. I'll go back to your question about Husky Ready, so C K H has a lead-worthy course, right? That we're pulling some from, if it's an overlap, we could get, run the full lead-worthy play in Husky Ready. And then cover the other stuff in I J, so we need to, we'd have to figure some of that out, um. Yeah, but there's opportunities to expand that as well.
Yeah, cause I J knows they're not licensed teachers, so they have to submit all their lessons, so they have to have a certain amount of time dedicated to submit all their lessons. They have to demonstrate how they're showing the competencies and all of that, so there's a lot of I J paperwork on their end, so that's why they recommend the teacher time. Limited in the morning or afternoon or whatever to do some of those I J responsibilities, they have follow calls with I J folks above them and things like that too.
Who said our cost, if the end of two years would be?
No, so two years, nothing, then a year three, they'd come back and if we wanted to sign an agreement, I grant I was twenty-six thousand dollars, you go down to the one below.
It's barely half for nine or for eleven.
Yeah, the one you're proving not, down below is for the eleven-twelve, which we've had for, this is going to third year, yeah. So that's, it would be similar uh arrangement at that time, and we asked, are we signing, it's like, no, you could decide at that time. To walk away, he said, obviously, we're hoping that we do a good enough job and you're, that you wanna keep it.
Because that funding to your question, so we pay a third, the state pays a third and then corporate donation, they pay the third, so we're, we're getting a full-time staff member for a third.
Yeah, they're an I J employee, but they're here full-time.
Yeah, how they explained it to us was they just are gonna waive the fee for the two years and the twenty-eighty for this current structure, and then. Then we decided at year three what we wanna do.
I'll see you as being a bad.
Just wanna know before we get down the road, you'll get the twenty-eight agreement to, to formally approve in June, but that would allow us to start advertising.
Kind of blessing that, that'll allow a lap at a time when, when we need it.
I think they reached out to us because of the strength of the ten, the success that we've had at eleven-twelve, and so they're looking for districts that they wanna scale it up to. And we were wanting to reach out to, okay, so, alright, then I will, we'll move forward, I'll bring the agreement back, yeah, bring the agreement back in June.
Perfect, excuse me, we'll move into the consent agenda minutes, we have the regular meeting from four-eight and the special meeting from four-eleven. Any changes or modifications needed on that? Alright, paid bills and invoices, Kami?
I looked through these, I had a couple that kind of caught my eye, Capital Sanitary, there was a scrubber repair for eight thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars, I thought that was a bit pricey. So what happens is when you have multiple invoices, it pulls the description of the very first invoice for this report. So just so you know, it was seventeen hundred in the repair of a twenty thousand dollar machine, the rest were supplies, so I thought I would clarify that. Uh when you get to the Iowa Department of Human Services, the memo says April twenty twenty-four, that's Medicaid, that's the state piece of Medicaid that we pay back. Under uh twenty-two, Fund Twenty-Two Management, remember that's where we pay our insurance out of, but there's a nineteen thousand dollar, that's. Our, our exposure on wind and hail at the one percent of property and contents, we set five hundred thousand aside. In management as a reserve for that loss, and the other half, we bought additional coverage to cover, that's what this one is. Uh that's a prepaid expense because it's for next year, what else have we got in here? In Fund Forty, that's debt service, there's an invoice there to Barron's Tate Consulting. They do an arbitrage report on us for us every year because we pre-levered on bonds that were not yet callable. So they take that money, that tax money that we've collected, and they put that into an escrow account. Which you shouldn't be yielding more on your investment than you did on the sale of the bonds, so that's why Baron Tate spends this for us every year. This is the last time we'll do it, because what we're pre-levering for next year, those bonds are callable in twenty-five, so we won't have to do that again. That's what popped out for me, any questions for me on anything else?
I just wanna go back up really fast, Kami, on your heading under consent agenda eight, you have motion to approve with the exception of R and B Tire, which. I just, we don't have to do that anymore, yeah, that can come out because Julie's no longer on the board.
It was a copy and, it was a copy of.
Nice one, yeah.
I'll go in and fix that, I published minutes.
Personnel report?
Yeah, so a couple that we filled in there, the first-grade teacher, fifth-grade teacher. Uh and some other assistant coaching positions that are coming into their seasons, um so yeah, and then some resignations, so pretty, pretty standard.
Okay. Um open enrollment.
We have two open enrollment applications coming into the district, one is for next year as a ninth grader, and one, they would like to complete the year here. Everything's in accordance, there's no I E P to be considered, so at this point with current legislation, I would just recommend that you approve both.
Financial report.
Financial, revenue and expenditures, if you wanna look at that one. Um we are slightly ahead on expenditures, when you look at the three-year average in the past, it's less than a percent, but if you look at revenues. We're over uh about a little bit more than what we are in expenditures, all in all. Uh it's a good level report, we're right on track, we're under a percent, revenues are higher than expenditures, we're right on track. As far as the statement of provision, I didn't have anything that I wanted to pull out, there is still a government receivable in Fund Ten. When you get into July and you see those receivable, that, the year-end reports, you're gonna see a lot of those. But it's odd to see something like that in government receivables at this late date, that is, the Johnston Community School District still. Had not paid that first semester heart invoice, we pay it, I bill them, it's a receivable and they pay it in. I actually have it, it has now been deposited, so it's clear by the next month, but that, that looked odd to me sitting there. And then I wanna bring you up to date on nutrition, um we have gotten several donations and with Bob Casper's passing. We are listed as for memorial money, so currently our negative accounts are one thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight. And the largest one, I mean, we're at that ten-dollar mark, and there's over six thousand in the donation account, so we're. We're doing a great job and every student gets to go through the line and choose a hot lunch of their choice.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Alright, contracts, Kami, Justin, who's leading us through these?
Yeah, I'll jump in, so cybersecurity renewal, um with the changes in the A A and all that, it didn't affect our cybersecurity. So we're able to maintain the cybersecurity that we approved last year, so that's the agreement going forward for next year. Um I J F Y twenty-five, again, that's every year, it's for the, the eleven-twelve program, we just approve this every year at this time. Uh Alan Hanson, video streaming, I've tried to keep you up to date on this a bit. Um Alan and Todd approached us uh with wanting to change how they were going about streaming. Uh Todd wants to be live broadcast someone away of certain sports, and they wanted to go out to the public and solicit uh donations. Uh to do that, to cover their costs, Alan's been doing it at near no cost for us, we've asked him every year for an invoice, uh and it's been around. Thirty-six hundred, thirty-five hundred dollars, well below what he's paying. Uh the holdup for us was putting it out there on district letterhead, soliciting revenue with no oversight and. Only targeting certain sports that he was going to livestream, that's just not something that, as a district, I thought we could endorse. Uh work with them to get to this agreement, they've agreed to go through the end of June, or end of baseball softball. And then they wanna re-look at the agreement going into next year, but they're gonna go out, they're gonna solicit funds, it's not on our letterhead. It's under their LLC, allows them to pick and choose like a radio station essentially, what games are going to do and how they're gonna cover it. Uh they, we did put in the agreement that they're gonna post to the, our YouTube page, which is what we've been doing, uh they'll continue to do that. And moving forward, there is some interest on them, uh moving forward for some subscription to it, and we'll have to navigate that. If we wanna allow them to, to make money on, you know, content that, that's being done, they're capturing it all, they're doing all the work, I get that. But that was something came up going down the road, so that's what you have in front of you, they've agreed to it, they're also listening, they plan to livestream starting uh with softball. On Monday, so.
Be curious to see how other districts navigate this situation, cause we're like not, not the only one.
I did reach out, and it is kind of the wild, wild west, so Carol runs their own. So Carol does, um their kids do it, which I would love to get there, we just haven't got the interest uh of our kids to do it. Um Ballard uh outsources all of theirs, they give it out to an outside company, um and they, they do whatever. They did have to shut them down recently because of some comments that were made by their commentators, tours, officials, and they said, you're done. Um but there's really not a lot, uh when I reached out to Miriam on agreement, there's not a lot in play, so. Um I think it sprung up in COVID, everybody kind of started doing it, it's become an expectation, I don't fault Alan at all. I know what he's putting into it, um but like I explained to him, I said, you've gone above and beyond what the district ever asked for, which is great. We can't afford to pay you for, for that service, and he's got a lot of expense, so I don't fault him for trying to do that. It just had to be something that protected, in my opinion, the district a bit, does that make sense?
We just called down to Texas and find out.
I should call down to Texas.
Every, every Friday.
They just put it on live TV, so like, I mean, there's.
There's still crews there filming, they saw, you know, color commentators.
I reached out to several peers in I A S B, and like you said, it is, anything and everything goes, some have nothing, some have.
I've heard.
Life and glitter and glamour and.
I heard.
Yes, Kendra.
I have confirmed that, you know, there's a district that they're paying, they're paying to do it. And they're paying a distant X amount of dollars and they run everything, um. Again, I'm not trying to make money off of, of Alan at this point, um I think this agreement allows them to do what they want. Clearly delineates that it's not district-sponsored, and, and from our opinion, takes the burden of. The oversight on the revenue that they're making and taxes and all that stuff, because. Like we talked, if it's out of the district, they think it's a tax uh free donation, and yet it's for a for-profit company, that just blurred the lines a bit. Um I think this allows them to do what they wanna do, skill streams are events, um if somebody asks, well, how come their live broadcasting softball, not baseball? It's their company, their decision, um or I couldn't, I, I didn't think as a district, we could be in that position, say, we're gonna do softball and not baseball. We're not gonna do soccer, but we're gonna do football, just doesn't, didn't sit right with me, so that's why it's here. Um keep going, uh juvenile justice sharing, so this was sent to me, um. Uh something that they would like us, uh the juvenile court would like us to endorse, I had tw- I had Miriam review it, so it's pretty standard, and so that's why it's here.
This is new, we haven't done this.
No, this is not something we've had in the past.
So they're like, this one does not seem familiar.
Yeah, uh yeah, I don't know if it was the juvenile court officer or whoever, but um Natalie sent it to me. Want me to put in place, I did have Miriam look it over, she said, pretty standard, you can move forward with it, so that's why it's here.
Do you have any questions on that one?
What's the, what's the purpose of it?
Uh I was just sharing information a bit, um.
Because before you couldn't?
I think this protects you, because you have an agreement in place that you will, does that make sense?
I mean, not, not really.
You know, I think, I understand, I.
Yeah, I'm more than like, why, if we haven't had one, what's?
Like, why do we need this, what's, what is like between the lines in this, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know.
Read between the lines for me.
I, I don't know why all of a sudden, um I think it started Dallas County put it in place, and it's trickling out, if I remember correctly, and I said it's some of Dallas County's put in place. Um they're asking to put some, it here, I don't have a lot of experience with it, so I fired off to our attorney.
There's something to deal with, things being admissible, and probably a court case that happened somewhere, and this is the outcome of.
I'm confused about why we need it all of a sudden, but um just hoping somebody could explain it.
I think part of it is when you have a student who is under. Who's working with juvenile court system, and then they're asking us for school-related discipline. That goes into an agreement that they have outside, so an agreement like you're not gonna be in trouble in school. Well, me sharing a student information record, which would be their discipline record with, that outside agency, which would be the juvenile court system. And it kind of protects us from me sharing student record with some of his other parents.
But you have, but there's never been anything like this in place before.
We have a newer J C O, I think it's a second or thirty or so, maybe it's common practice other places, but we just haven't, is what I'm guessing.
I'm pretty sure in the original email, it was uh that it was something that, that Dallas County does, and they would like to put it in place here. I remember the original email I got from Natalie, when she sent it to me, um again, I didn't know either, so I just asked. And before I brought it to you, Miriam said, pretty standard, you can move forward with it, so. I wish I had more from Malcolm, I, I didn't, so I just, like I said, I asked her for input on it.
I guess I just wanna make sure that, you know, whatever we agreed upon is then being fault, everything is being followed and documented, I would assume that falls on our. On Natalie, yeah, and the J C O, so I guess that's just my only thing, is making sure we now become complacent with whatever's in writing.
Yeah, and she indicated she'd like to have it in place, and we asked, can around, that, that she thought it would be a good thing too, so. And then then.
We still have questions on this one?
Uh next one's the agreement with uh for the J C O, which is every year, the contract, I believe, Kami, correct me wrong.
It auto renews for four or five, but.
Yeah.
It's time for the new contract again this year.
I don't think there's any changes on it.
No changes.
Engagement letter, this is Kami.
Uh on an engagement letter, comes out every year at this time, and yes, we. It'll be in, field work will be in August.
This is our third year with Anderson Larkin?
Third or fourth, maybe even.
I think the first year.
Time to change again, cause we, you.
Well, actually, now you can't find an auditor, you'll send out an R F P and you won't get any response back. I'm not unhappy with Mark, with Alex, our auditor, uh out of, they're out of a Tumla, in fact, they're picking up more schools. But the standards, uh used to be Nellie Cornman. Van Monen is no longer doing schools. It's hard to find.
Actually, three or four years ago, we changed because you, you'd said we've been with the same one, and it's always nice to get a fresh set of eyes and.
Change every three, four, five years. They, they use different work papers. They look at different things. I just, yeah, I think it's a good idea, but this will be my last one.
There we go. That's what I was looking for.
Uh, since I've been here, we have changed. I think the first year that it was, uh, who was? And then we went out for our.
So that's the hospital's B K D.
Van Monen and, and Anderson just came in so much earlier, I had to, and now Van Monen doesn't even do schools.
And then the next transportation master social worker agreement, curriculum director, library sharing, we learners. Those are the sharing agreements we have in place with other districts. So just we bring it back, try to bring it back every year.
Changes on those that I could.
Uh, no, there is one that's not present and it's been, uh, we use the work-based learning with I thirty-five. I thirty-five is loss or superintendent, loss or S B L. I have reached out numerous times asking for that agreement. It's our intention to enter into it again. Haven't seen it yet. Well, put it in June, I'll bring it to you. It's one day a week. She serves here, Heather Duttry helps out with career fairs, those kinds of things. Uh, and lining up some of our employee visits and we get something, we get something awaiting for that position that we use to help cover the cost, but I don't have that one yet. I have reached out a couple of times and I just think through the transition, it's fallen through. Uh, and then the heart therapeutic classroom, oh, sorry, any questions on those?
I just want to make sure all the new ones, understand what those.
Share time with an employee in another district. Some of them generate supplemental waiting, some do not. The library doesn't. There's buying time off of of her contract for her to serve them. But the others, curriculum director will, social worker will, transportation will, and workplace learning, what have we had in place? Heart therapy classroom, again, we met, they're gonna maintain that classroom uh, the same going into next year. Uh, the following year, because of some of the reductions that the A is looking at, we may have to look at some changes. Um, they've got to cut their administrative costs by twenty ten percent, ten percent, I think. So we may have to look at how that's configured to cover their principal cost. Though we would like to see before we have to work through that, but for next year, no changes in how the programs run.
So in twenty-six?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah, we'll need to work through how that's going to work.
But we don't have any idea what that looks like.
Uh, right now, uh, the administrative cost was, um, what do we have to do to get that to be covered, Kami?
Not covered under special end costs. So we do our portion out of our risk, and I think that's what the other districts do too. There's still a question with the A A because this administrative position is already paid for by participating districts. It might be able to be carved out from that administrative cost of Heartland that needs to be reduced. So we don't know yet.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just they know they're going in, they have to, and when they look at overall administration. Does that make sense? They put on a radar to think about, to be aware of. But right now it's, the program covers itself. The district's paying in or covering the cost of actual cost of the program. So, so no changes um, for that going into next year.
Seems like it would be really strange for them to say like, well, we need to lower our administrative costs.
So I'm gonna take care of some of those.
So we're gonna true, get rid of administrator that you guys are already.
Yeah, we have no desire to. It's just, yeah, they have to work through it. Yeah.
Amongst different districts.
So no, so Jeremy oversees all of the heart classroom in, in arts or the A A out of here, but they have to trim administration.
Somebody from another district with the heart program would then be our administrator.
We're the only heart program.
So, yeah, so initial thing you threw up is then a district take on that as contract. And still bill out. Does that make sense for the services? I hope we don't have to. Uh, like Kami said, but they just said, hey, as we look at, that's the debit administrator, and they say we've got to cut administration.
They come here.
They started their own program. Districts are starting. Districts are starting their own program, but Johnston School's running it, not Heartland. So some school districts, if they're big enough that they can have enough kids, are starting their own.
Okay, thank you. Could have sworn that he said it was in Johnston, so thank you.
Early this year, just for, I think it's true to do that, that program has served fourteen, when I wrote the legislators, it had served fourteen districts. It had at that time. When I wrote the legislators, like, here are all the districts that have benefited from this program that's completely run by the A A. It was at fourteen at that time. And you've approved since that time, two or three, I think, new agreements. For students coming from other districts. So maybe only approve them when they're new, when they're a district that hasn't sent a kid. Today, Roland Story was here, visiting. Um, they say it's kind of far, but they think the program's
Kind of far.
Right.
But that shows the need, I mean.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're absolutely, I'm, yeah, I'm scoffing at the need. Bus or suburban every morning and every afternoon for an hour.
They had A A staff from Roland's story that were looking for the best place for students, and they were here.
So crazy. Okay, any other questions on any of the lots of, you know, I think it's twelve, Roman numerals aren't my strong suit, twelve contracts and agreements? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second? Motion by Malcolm, second by Sam. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Old business, review of board policy, five oh four oh eight.
Yeah, so this one we talked about, made the changes that were asked for, basically that when we cancel all junior high and outside agencies will be canceled. The only thing that would be allowed would be high school. So we just made that adjustment to the policy that we talked about.
We're looking for approval of the new language on five oh four oh eight. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion by Gina, second by Malcolm. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, new business fiscal year twenty-four budget amendment hearing.
Okay, once we take care of the certified budget for fiscal twenty-five, then it's time to go back and look at where we are this year. When you take where we're at in the four sections, if you wanna, you might want to look at the publication for the hearing amendment. In our four areas in that facilities and construction and that one-line item. It were just a little bit higher. And then when you think of all the projects that he starts to wrap up as soon as school is out, and depending on when those expenditures go fall. We may exceed a certified budget. So based on that, I'm just recommending that we go ahead, amend the budget now. We're still only going to complete what we need to complete. If we were in that time of really tight cash and something new had come up, we would have pushed something down the road. But we're not in that situation. So instead, we just, we need to amend the budget to match the projects that we're completing.
What you're adding a million on.
Yes, and maybe we don't even have to have that, but just for comfort, like the head on the pillow, if all of the projects get done and all of the bills committing are paid. We will still need our certified budget. And we won't get a ding in our audit.
So we need to approve that amended budget.
This is just the hearing portion. I didn't receive any written comment on it. Any questions about how the process works or you know, we do that five-year facility plan for these types of expenditures, but we do that early in the year and we've certified the budget the year, you know, earlier in the year. We've had the filling tower.
And an elevator.
Yeah, that was three fifty, the elevator was a hundred thousand. So, yeah. Stuff just comes up. And there were projects that we thought would be completed in twenty-three and ran over into twenty-four. Pay for all that. What was the big one that took so long?
We have any issues with all the A C, like the metals? We've talked about those a couple of times.
Fire suppression was spent a hundred and fifty on installation. There was.
Oh, the new controls are the.
And that just took forever. So all of that hit in twenty-four too. So there's a lot of things you can identify, but if everything comes to fruition, we should amend the budget.
So that was the hearing. Next item is actually do the Help me out, Kami. It's the same thing.
It is the exact same thing. I didn't have anything else to add. So I didn't know which one you were gonna pop into the attachment board. So now we just need a resolution to amend that.
And what wording do you want on that? A motion to approve the amended twenty twenty-four certified budget.
By that million dollars in that fourth line item as presented.
Would anybody like to make that motion? Is there a second? Motion by Malcolm, second by Gina. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, approval of the handbooks for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year.
Yeah, so, um, trying to make this easy and gave you like the changes, which kind of goes by page number, and then we attach the actual working copy that has those changes made in it highlighted. So questions on those? Again, trying to put them in by page number. Some of them were just cleaning it up. Some of them were cleaning up board policies that we've made changes. Removing some language based on, you know, law changes or adding on the staff handbook, and then the principals looked at their building-specific um, handbooks, and then they made some changes. They'd like to make those as well. So any questions for us on those? Part of this too is, um, so you know, we open up registration. They have to say that they've seen the handbook. There's actually, Jane's got a clean copy on registration with these changes in it. So, uh, just kind of.
Said there was a note on transportation.
Sorry, yes.
Is that in the student or staff? I would assume student.
Uh, so there's, in the elementary, there's some, well, where is it? She sent it to me. Yeah, we found it. We'd be down on the parent-student handbooks is where it'll be.
Up to eighty-eight pages? Is that the R F I D cards? So it highlighted in green or mine? Page forty-four is what I have. That's a new system that we were hoping to have ready for this school year and didn't get in place. Is that correct?
Delay on the actual equipment coming. So it didn't show up until after school started. So then they got the equipment in. And then getting the actual cards ready to go. So, yes.
But this will be the, the kind of tracking system for the students when they get on, off the buses. And locations, things of that nature. Okay.
Yeah, so they'll scan on and scan off, and it'll tell them who's on the bus, who's not.
Yeah, and there's a monitoring piece for the parents. Is that, is there like a, half if I remember?
Yes. We're gonna activate it right away though. Want to work the bugs out first, but yeah.
Understandable.
That was the change, sorry. She had to, literally right before I came over here.
Can see his replacement card is eight dollars and on the fees that I asked him to approve, it's five dollars.
It'll be five. We'll change the handbook.
So students are gonna wear these cards or?
Uh, they'll have them. Yes, to scan on and off. And so Norwalk has it, Ballard has, um, North Polk, I think, is who Ben has talked to about using these. So the big thing. It's going to twenty-five. We talked about that. Let's put it in five. So.
Would imagine that there's like a little bit of a learning curve.
There's going to be a learning curve. Yes, there will be a learning curve for sure. District we talked to said there is. However, uh, it's really helped with the drivers and makes your kids on the right buses.
I wonder like how the drivers keep track of. Like, okay, I have to go down this dirt road today because so-and-so lives down here, but they're not on here, so I don't have to go down there. So how do I? Just seems like a thing.
Yep. Yep.
Shuttle bus riders have to use it or not? Is it only for route riders? Am I adding too many? What if to the solution or to the problem, I mean?
He's probably the thing, but I don't know if they have to use it for shuttle or not.
Cause I just know that is one of our biggest discipline areas are those middle school and junior high kids shuttling down to the elementary school.
Oh, I think it's every route, but don't quote me. He's not here. I think it's every route.
I just know if that would help us with who's on, who's off, you know, can you scan it? It says, nope, you're not allowed, because I know they between buses when they're.
Students who are struggling, like you can't be on this shuttle, you gotta be on this shuttle. So I think would definitely kind of play in those. I apologize, I haven't worked through all the logistics with Ben.
I think it's a great system. I just those are, I didn't, you know, some of those small little workaround things, because those are the questions people ask, what does my kid have to have that when they ride just the shuttle bus or or not?
Any other questions on the handbooks, guys?
Thank you for the synopsis one of all of the changes.
So I'll send it out to.
That was nice to have it that way.
That's Jane.
Give her a thank you. It's very helpful to see all of that upfront. Um, if no other questions or discussion, I entertain a motion to approve the staff handbook and the parent student handbook, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion by Sam. There's
Second.
Second by Gina. Any other discussions? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Do you want to abstain from that? As a part-time staff member, should she abstain from that?
I wondered that about the sub stuff.
Bring in the staff handbook.
I don't know. That situation, I don't think. Yeah, not contracted.
Okay, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, she's not contracted, she's fine.
Okay, sorry, it just popped up in my brain. I was like. It happens too much. Okay. S R O agreement for twenty, uh, fiscal year twenty-five?
Yeah, so last, uh, board meeting you said move forward, we met with Drew and Chief Pittman and walked through that agreement. Jared and I made some changes and then I sent it out to Miriam and she updated with twenty-eight E language. So what you have in front of you is that agreement. I did send that back to Chief Pittman and Drew said, hey, this is what our attorney added to as far as it didn't change anything substantially with what was in there. It did, she aligned it to the twenty-eight, twenty-eight E language that needed to be in there. So we're asking for the board to prove it. That'll get them started on their end. Shouldn't be anything substantially different on context than what we talked about. It's just layout was addressed to follow line twenty-eight agreement.
Have you heard much back from them in terms of like, did the city, were they able to come up with like budgetary guidelines around this? Is there funding available for it?
Said, yeah, they said they've, uh, they've allocated and they're gonna add an officer back.
So they're, yeah, they're taking a current officer and backfilling that already. So they're going to backfill that as well. So we're not down in the city of officer.
We talked about the concern with additional coverage and not wanting to pay that and how they can flex their hours during that time. You know, if they're gonna be here on Friday night, they may peel out one day that week, of course. You know, for four hours and then come back and, and make it up that night. So we did talk about that, not wanting to have that additional charge. There's a meeting, we talked about a meeting in August to go through the school calendar and lay out those dates that we would want so that they know well in advance, uh, when those weeks are and can plan accordingly. So.
Talking there about overtime again and again and again, and we kind of worked through that a lot in our conversations. Any other? Any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the S R O agreement as presented. Motion by Gina is their second. Uh, second by Sam. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Jared, I have that one right here to be signed.
Okay. Uh, Reckon River Conference proposed ticket price increase for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, so I've sent this out to you numerous times, um, real quick background, I know you're sure, or tired, but we went to an online ticketing program. There's, there is a fee built in. So the original thought was to pass that fee on to So the original thought was to pass that fee on to conference discussion was just pass that fee on. So if you go to the state tournament and buy a ticket, you're gonna see, say eight dollars, but it's gonna be eight dollars and some change, right? That's your. Um, we said just don't do that, raise the ticket price, cover the fee. Does that make sense? And then we also asked the A Ds to put together rationale that we'll then send out to our community as to why. And those are the prices that are included there, how things have just gone up. My conversation with Randy is to keep the activity passes the same. To not raise those here and encourage people to buy those. Does that make sense? These are on his end, it's money up front, easier at the ticket takers, and it's a cost saving to the patrons, so that's how we proceed. So um every district is being asked to take this to the board and understand, and we'll put something out, and they'll start for next year. So baseball soft will be the same, it will start in the, in the fall. So.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed Reckon River Conference ticket price increase for the twenty four, twenty five's calendar year. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Malcolm, second by Gina. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. First reading of board policy updates based on I A S B recommendation.
So a lot of these, they're, they're, a lot of them are tied back to like um accounting, revenues, fundraising. All I S B recommendations, they did uh rescind, recommend rescinding a few policies and combining them and fundraising. So those changes were made in some of the, the handbooks as well. Um, but again, I had Kami look over them, go through them. Uh, and what we have in front of you is what we're proposing. And then I've linked the actual policy drafts there for you as well. This will be first, first reading.
Any questions on any of those policies?
The only one I had was on fundraising within the district.
Okay.
Do we, it says that the board has to approve, so if.
So in September.
Do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in September, we bring a list. Then I asked the, the A D put together, we tried to capture them all at that time. Now, there are some that come out through the year. That I will give approval of, well, but we try to get all of them to the board uh in, I think it's September.
Yep, last year was the first year we get a big spreadsheet of all the ones that are proposed and what the money's going for, when they're doing it, and who's doing it, and. Any other questions or discussions on those? If not, I entertain a motion to approve uh the policies as presented for first reading. Is there a second? Motion by Malcolm, second by Sam. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. We are on to annual review and approval of districts' individual career and academic plan, I cap.
I'm on this answer record, ask you to be brief.
I promise, we will not read. I, my original plan was read through all thirty-nine pages. Oh, St. John. No, I promise. Here's why you're here with I cap. And so I cap is another acronym, uh individual career and academic plan. Years and years ago, our state mandated all eighth grade kids go through a four-year plan. In the last few years, our state has increased their expectations with this idea of future ready. And how to capture that work is through what they call the I cap, the individual career and development plan. And what you're seeing is the organization of our plan and the activities that we have completed this year. So how this plan, how this state report works is a lot different than most. Either you're doing it ahead or behind, this is during the year. So this is for this year. It's not meant to be a final document, but you just have a PDF of a Google version. Ton of work from Josh, Suzie, Busta, junior high staff, ton of work from Cam, Sydney, Kathy, all of those folks. There's some work on my end as well, but this is how we capture how we do four-year planning. And the only thing I'll share is the requirements of the plan, have to cover four-year planning, how we do work-based learning activities. What they call the essential components, which is like self-understanding, career exploration, et cetera. And then we're required to report how we do FAFSA advisement for kids. That's, those are state requirements. The work-based learning and FAFSA are new this year. And then what happens is, is then A A personnel review our plan, give us recommendations and give us feedback. We've done a lot better in the last few years we've been doing this. The feedback we kept getting was do more than just the Zello activities. And then link the things that you're doing, cause we got told, we were doing a lot of the things, we just weren't reporting it out on the I cap. That's why we went from fourteen pages to thirty-nine in one year. So really, we're just, we're doing an amazing amount of things. The quality of the work that I cap has shown in the last, we've increased the quality in the last few years. I've just been really proud of their efforts and the work that's getting captured here. Everything's linkable, so you can see all, all of the things that we're up to. But really, that's why this is, this is a state requirement, and we're actually required to report this to the board. Which is why one of the components of the plan is a board presentation. I will say. And really, that's it. There's a lot of information in this document. There is. I mean, it is a phenomenal year review wrap-up. I mean.
Kim and the counselors.
You guys have done an amazing job of articulating like what we do. I lost about an hour and a half, so I was like, I forgot that we did that earlier this year and forgot we did that, and.
Yeah.
So it's phenomenal. Good job, guys. Any, do we have to approve that Kami? Yes.
Yes.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the annual review. And, sorry, just to prove the district's I cap plan. Motion by Sam, is there a second? Second by Gina, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, approve the uh W H S class of twenty twenty four graduates.
Yeah, so actually we found a, a year or so, you don't actually, what has to actually approve them. However, the board is always enjoying see uh, knowing who's gonna graduate. So we've maintained that. So that is the list that uh Mr. Smith provided me of our graduates, uh who will hopefully all walk on Sunday, right?
That's the plan.
It's checking grades right now.
Yeah. So again, seriously, you can look through and who's actually graduating uh this year.
Any questions on those? No, I would, we don't, I know we don't have to, but I would entertain a motion to approve that list of graduates for the year of twenty twenty four. Is there a second? Motion by Malcolm, second by Sam. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. We will see them on Sunday, hopefully. Fees for twenty twenty five.
Been no change in fees, uh we've already spoken to activity tickets, uh meal prices, we're not going to change. We have a hefty balance in that account. Um, the adult meal price is set by the state. It's got several components. It's actually going down this year, from four eighty-five down to four seventy-five. I think they took the federal COVID relief piece out. And I think that's the difference. Then, when you look at lost and damaged items, the state tells you that it's always an actual cost. So I've just put out to the right-hand side those proposed bus cards. We looked at the cost of those cards and then we put in a little bit of. Administrative and, you know, five dollars was the replacement fee.
Any questions for Kami on the proposed twenty five fees? And kind of motion to approve them as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Malcolm, second by Gina. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. All right. Ms. Craven, what you've been waiting for. You're up.
Um, so we don't have that much going on since we did most of our big projects last month. Just some updates, um the Newark Exchange went good. This is like, they already came here previously, like in March. But we went over there, it was pretty good. Um, and then the care basket for Grant, um their parent, his parents. And him really liked it. They wrote us back a note, just thanking us and how they thought it was thoughtful. But yeah, our last meeting was last week, and we already started planning for next year. So on May twenty ninth is our first like summer meeting to discuss like homecoming themes and stuff. And we already have all our roles out too, so it's pretty, it's been pretty quick, like a pretty quick turnaround.
And Ms. Craven will be staying in this role for next year, so.
Congratulations. Any questions for? Gina, anything? Sam, I have nothing. Malcolm, Emily. That's gross.
Keep it a quick, um appreciate you hanging in here and coming over and check out the, the table. I wanted you to see that, and then the A I team. Has done some really great work, so I appreciate you hanging with us tonight, a little longer meeting. Uh, what I gave you is I S B, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, that came out today. Just goes through the A A bill, property tax, and then it gives every district's portion that they'll keep. So you can go back and find our district on the back, on the funds that will uh keep the sixty percent that the A A will keep. And then uh our total allotment, and that's for next year. Following year, if it maintains a hundred percent, will come our way. Uh, June sixth, Cory, Kendra and I will be meeting with Cindy Yellic and um Dr. Mead. Uh, they're coming out to districts, gonna walk through the fee for service. Hopefully you saw the document I put on the board update, like what it would cost us per student if we paid actual cost. We can't do that. Uh, so what they're going, the way I understand is, they're gonna talk to all the districts, what a district wants. Then they'll go back and try and negotiate with those companies for a group purchase rate based on those districts participating. And then come back to us with a fee. Uh, it won't cost us anything until we hit that forty percent, and then anything over, we're gonna have to pay. Uh, we're already talking about internally, how, what does that look like? Cause our teachers are used to going to the A A just ordering stuff. We're gonna have to put some internal controls in, um, very similar to probably do with anything else, a P O, like it's pre-approved and then an order. Um, Kami doesn't know, we haven't heard, are they going to give us a line item to track that? Uh, those monies that we're supposed to be keeping or not. And we just haven't heard anything new on that, or. So those dollars you see back there are supposed to come to us, but they're, they're gonna come through the flow-through, and I don't know if they'll be split out and we have to track them or not. So wanted you to have that. Uh, Ken did a great job of covering into year items. I just have some things down there, opportunities for you as board members to participate. Optimus hot dog days, you hand a hot dog to the kids, sit in their back, they walk by, say hi, if you wanna join us more than. Jared makes it most of the time.
I trade you about four or five.
Hey, can't talk about the staffing concern, just wanna, where we're at with industrial tech, we will continue to try and advertise for that. We think we're a two-person apartment, we just can't find anybody, so we're going for next year's one. Hope you've seen stuff about the Student Success Summit by S B, uh, Hansbrough, I've never heard him, I've read some of his stuff, he would be outstanding. Happy to go if board members want to attend. Uh, when's registration close, you remember? I can't remember.
Mine never closes, but I'm sure.
If you're interested, I can make that work more than likely and could attend with you. I may go.
And I'll be going up, so if anybody wants to ride too, I'll go up.
Okay. Um, and then the last was staff T-shirts. We've got two Homefront Realty in Jones Creek to approve. That's gonna cost us in next year. Our focus is gonna be around the profile of graduate. Kendra's worked on the design for that. If board members want one, let me know, and I'll get, send the form out to you, you tell us, um, just put yourself under the administration tab. With your email and size, and we'll get one for you. So that's what I got.
Anything else? Next meeting, June tenth at our regular location.
Location.
At five o'clock. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.